All right, let's go ahead and call it one of the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget. Chris, you want to take role?
I will. Wolf?
Here.
Rokols?
Here.
Coons?
Here.
Alessa?
Here.
Brown is absent as well as our student representative. He's at track meet.
All right, so we'll go ahead and leave this open for five minutes before we start our normal scheduled meeting and then anybody has anything on the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget, uh, we'll leave this open and then we'll close it right before we get to our action item, so. This is kind of a weird morning.
Awkward.
Awkward.
Yeah.
It's good to know that actually I'll be like, I gotta get something.
Also, the art show stuff, amazing to see what some of these kids are doing. We're quite nice.
If you don't let us turn back now.
You had a big take off.
They did off. How hard they get?
North celebrity.
So why didn't they just all of a sudden?
The Grenelle College.
The raid of. Oh, no.
I mean, they're brutal, like you said.
Yeah, it was, it was good to cover it off. Our boys went last week and got home at eleven.
Last year, I don't think they turned down until eleven thirty.
Yeah.
One minute.
They need help when he needs.
Yes. It seems like there's so many more. That's a long, but ways to go.
We sent seven buses out today for activities and five vans.
Well, we got more vans on the.
Yeah.
Put the sort of.
Yeah.
I think that's. Well.
So that, that'll give us four, twelve passenger van. And four. We have two now. These will be two more. These vans came from up in West, we can lie away at Chicago College Athletic.
Oh, the modules? Thirty thousand dollars. Like, uh, brother, team, where it goes. All right, uh, let's call one of the regular scheduled board meeting here. It's five thirty-five, uh, Thursday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, mission statement, engage each and every student in rigorous and relevant learning experiences, maximizing achievement through exceptional teaching. Uh, Chris, you want to take role?
I, I will. Wolf?
Here.
Rokols?
Here.
Coons?
Here.
Alessa?
Here.
Absent are Brown and our student representative, um, Ben Cameron.
All right, again, welcome everybody. Thanks for coming. Uh, we can kind of jump right ahead. Welcome, excuse me, celebrations of achievement.
Yeah, before doing so, um, we have a scout in the audience. Yeah, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Nora Bunkson, and I, I'm Nora Bunkson, and I'm doing this for citizenship in the community.
For your mayor badge. Great, well, welcome. Okay, celebrations?
Yep.
Okay.
Ready to go.
Um, Chris went ahead and put all the, the wording, the celebrations on our, on our, um, agenda, but I'll run through it quickly. Our jazz choir continued their long tenure of, um, top three finishes in the state. They got second and within that performance uh, of the whole day, Kerrigan Lyons was, um, identified as the out, an awarded the outstanding performer of the day. Um, Jessica Grimm and Ashley Hummel, they qualified, uh, for the National Leadership Conference in Atlanta, Georgia for the, uh, um, future business, future business leadership award, and I think there were over seven hundred participants in that. And so they'll be heading to Atlanta, Georgia this summer. Uh, Empty Bowls, an annual event, uh, Josh Kozas, um, does with his students, raised three thousand dollars. I think Josh said that was the biggest one-time hall for, um, the empty bowls and that money don't, is donated to the food bank. Uh, Becky West was honored as the nutrition director for Iowa, the healthy, she was awarded the Healthiest State Initiative Award. Uh, so congratulations to Becky. We have an Alpha Club at the intermediate school is all, and, and the Alpha Club is the young version of Optimist. Uh, I think there are only two in the state and ours is the largest by far. Four in the state, four in the state, ours is the largest of the four. They had a fundraiser where they had a bingo night and raised, uh, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for cystic fibrosis. Over a hundred attended.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, um, I just wanted, you know, we've talked about, a lot about our writing and our K-12 writing initiative and, um, Holly, I brought a copy if you'd like to read it or if you'd like me to read it. Okay. Uh, our, our kids are just amazing and this is, so the topic, the topic is persuasive, argumentative, it's part of the core curriculum.
Yeah.
And so the, and this student is writing to the principal.
She wrote, dear Mrs. Westland, Katie thinks school days are too long for us. We get so, so, so tired in the middle of the day. I think we need to put up a sign where it's the loudest. Because people are trying to go to bed because they are tired. Will that um, work and can we do that? I would love it if it could. Because if people are tired, they cannot do work.
Amen.
So she worked on this piece for a while. We had to keep stapling papers to her packet. Um, and she came down yesterday and read it to me and is working on her sign to hang in the hallway. I reassured her that yes, indeed, we can hang this in the hallway. You may get, find a spot for it where it's the loudest. And then I had a whole stack on my desk this morning from kindergarteners that also wrote to me that are excited to read through them. So just writing with a purpose and really excited about the work that they're doing, so.
That's kindergarten, right?
Yeah.
Six pages of writing right there.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, they're gonna wrap it up?
Yep.
Awesome.
Uh, what do we think?
Yes.
Only because it's a pipeline. Hey, she told me about it. So we had something called Battle of Books. Right? So a lot of our kids read these books and then they competed against other teams. Well, they got the other teams had had the information all year, so they kind of came in late and they were three points away from being in the top ten. Um, so you know, I think next year we kind of, we kind of caught this later in the year. I think if we can start it sooner, but, uh, it was very interesting. They had to read the books and then answer questions on them and, and so, um, yeah, it was.
What level was that?
Uh, that's, uh, yeah, four, yeah.
Where'd they compete at?
Um.
In the school, up in Carrie's room.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So it's kind of like an interactive with.
Yeah, it's quiz thing, so they can read so many books, but they don't know what questions are going to be. And then everybody in the state that's participating answered those questions with the team. And there's so many books and you have to split it up as a team, like you might read five on every five, whatever. And then you're having the questions in the team with the highest score and answers.
Yeah, so it'll be interesting to see if that continues.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Um, focus on learn, on learning. We got high school math, so. So Janelle or Kirk, not anyone.
Yeah. I'm calling me, Rosca. So we just wanted to talk to you a little bit or we're, I'm gonna ask about what we've been doing in high school now. Yeah. Um. So, oh, sorry. Twenty twenty-one, that's what I thought. Um, a couple of years ago over the summer, um, we follow, everyone on the team follows different educators that are involved in different professional groups on social media. And it just started to blow up that summer about this book called Building Thinking Classrooms and Mathematics. Um, that was released that summer. Uh, it was written by a man named Dr. Peter Liljedahl, who is a professor from education in Canada. So he, um, started his work. He was invited into one classroom. Gosh, I'm sorry. Uh, he was invited into a classroom by a teacher. Um, she wanted him to observe the lesson and particularly, particularly to kind of just observe how students were thinking. And Peter kind of felt as he was like observing that they really weren't thinking. And so he decided he wanted to pursue that further. So he went on to visit forty different classrooms, um, in forty different schools and across the board witnessed students who were not thinking um, during the classroom time. So then he went back into ten of the classrooms to kind of try to figure out, well, what were they doing specifically during that time where we do the now we try it, like we kind of, you know, I've done it, maybe we've done it together and now you're trying it. You wanted to see what students were really doing during that time. So, um, no surprise this year for anyone that has taught, but there were some students who were, um, you know, small percent were, you know, slapping, maybe doing other things. A small percent were stalling, maybe needed to sharpen their pencil or needed more paper. Um, some were just kind of pretending they were doing it. Some were like legitimately trying it, but over fifty percent were doing what was called mimicking. They were copying, trying to copy the strategy that the teacher showed them without really understanding or thinking about what they were doing, just like mimicking the strategy. So then he went on to, um, do a fifteen-year research project where he worked with over four hundred K-12 teachers trying to break through those non-thinking behaviors and figure out what would work to get students to think. So he looked at fourteen practices, um, which kind of covers everything we typically do in a math classroom, and we'll look at those in just a second. Um, with each one of those practices, he kind of collected data to see how much thinking was happening based on that. And then they tried different things. Um, you know, what if we do this? How much thinking was happening? Hmm, what if we did this? And as you read the book, each chapter is dedicated to one of the practices. Then he kind of talked about that. We tried this and we found this improvement, but we still had this issue. So then we tried that and we had this improvement. And anyway, they kept kind of testing and modifying until he came up with what he thought was the most effective strategy for that practice to get the most thinking. Um, so these are the fourteen practices. Um, I won't go into great detail, but like a couple of, um, the ones that are very visual, so it's number four, room organization, and he talked about defronting the classroom. So if you would come up to the high school now, I think Josh, if you advance it just once, um, you'll notice that unless it's an assessment day, our rooms are set up much differently than they were several years ago. They're all in pods and the desks are facing every which way, um, because we just teach on any available workspace. Um, because number six, another big change is the student workspace. We try to get them up using vertical non-permanent surfaces, like we give another picture there. Um, those are some students recently in Mrs. Ham's room working some problems up on the board. So the district has been great about purchasing us, purchasing additional whiteboard spaces for us. So like all four walls now have some sort of whiteboard surfaces where students can work. Um, the fourteen practices were divided up into toolkits and help with implementation. So Janelle is going to talk a little more about that um, as you go on here. If you want to hit forward one more. Um, so the, the toolkits, we kind of started to look at those. And, um, this was kind of a timeline that we came up with as we started reading through the book on our own, um, just something that seemed really simple for us to begin to implement, especially since we were starting in the middle of the first semester. We were partway into that when we discovered this and so we're like, I think we could do this without much of a shift. And so we started to defront that room and make a few changes and, and have vertical space for kids to work on with a problem that was maybe not necessarily related to our curriculum. Um, and then we ended up going to, as luck would have it, he was the keynote speaker at the ICTM conference in Des Moines. So we all attended that on the high school team. Uh, and that was great information, great knowledge. And then that kind of, you know, pushed us forward into wanting, wanting to get more involved in this. And, um, there was good information there. They purchased materials for us. We talked about having him, if you want to hit the next slide. We talked about having Peter join us here on site. Uh, then we began to find out, hey, yeah, but he is doing another group, but, um, Cedar Rapids, yank, yank. So we're all gonna start by attending that first and then see where that takes us from there, would they?
Yeah, that's next fall.
Yeah.
It'll be all from November.
Today, I think, conference at East.
Today, yeah.
November. Yeah, yeah. Um, so anyway, we kind of jumped into toolkit number one and, um, zoomed in on that a little bit, lessons with good problems, uh, grouping students with them right there in the room, they're completely randomly generated so they can see that happening. Otherwise, you know, we sort of pretty randomly grouped them. They might think, yeah, that was completely random. The idea was they, they really wanted to be completely random and you know, we had some hesitation about that too, because we know there are students that maybe we should, that have worked together and, um, maybe get a little sidetracked, but for the most part, it's, it's worked fairly well. You think there might be a group of students where you think, man, they are not a standard friend group. There's no way this is gonna work. And it ends up working really well. There may be some things that are not as strong here right now. But actually, you get a group that shines through and tries the most and gets more accomplishments than the others. So it's kind of need to see some of those things evolve, um, as kids were group. So we have some of those positives, that engagement, collaboration among the kids that maybe thought wouldn't participate otherwise and actually wouldn't have kind of developed as, with seed a little bit and disappear. So getting them up, getting them vertical, things seem to be, it's been better. It's been good. Uh, you don't need to throw a problem that's a little, maybe too challenging and they're not sure where to begin. Sometimes it's a little bit, you know, to be able to start it. You give them a couple of hints, they're usually pretty good at that. And then, uh, again, getting them thinking and not just mimicking what they're doing. Things, things are a challenge because that's not what they're used to. They're just used to mimicking, right? So it's, but a challenge would be a good job. And we anticipate that we keep moving forward. Um, you know, we can imagine there are transition for all state funders. There are some ideas in the book that, um, might become questionable. Yeah, that might cause some like, I don't know how I would say it, but might just cause some kickback. Um, for example, they talk about the types of questions you answer or how you do or don't answer student questions. So we anticipate that the student's perspective might be, you know, she never answers my questions, you know, or, um, but that's part of the strategy of trying to get them to collaborate and figure it out as a group. Um, and what types of questions we answer. So we also want to make sure that, you know, we're, before we implement that step, we want to be purposeful and make sure that we're communicating with families and, but, but part of the book says not to communicate with the students about what you're doing upfront. So there's some things we need to figure out and hopefully next fall we'll learn more about some of those that we think could be a little bit more. And then we've been simply created this slideshow a couple of months ago, thinking we were gonna be here. We've actually dabbled into toolkit, uh, number two as well. Um, which I probably had to include a lot of those things. We're looking at curriculum and, um, again, all the, the groups that we follow, social media wise. Maybe not necessarily one book that's coming through or one, you know, set of textbooks, but it's just pulling from different things that tie together with the core and the BTC. We'll get, so we're, you know, a little torn and trying to work our way through that too, and we've had a hard time committing to anything. Uh, until we get to the end, it's just a little bit more. So we want to make sure we're making good choices. BTC stands for building, thinking, class, we're dividing the next one sort of again. And then, so, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, like Robert Krasinski may not mean a lot to everyone in this room, but he is kind of a math guru as well. Um, he's behind the open middle, right? Open middle problems. Wouldn't they go up? They heard a deep, deep talking, um, and has been, I've seen him at a conference several, several years ago in, um, Des Moines talking about getting students to think. And so he just on February sixth, um, you know, posted this, that, you know, he's been a math educator since two thousand and three. He felt this book has the potential to improve the way we teach math more than any other book he'd ever read. And then I read where it says, here's why I think we must all read it. I read that and I think it's the last quote we have there. Um, I'm not a Marvel, Marvel movie fan, but, uh, he went on to say, I think of each of the fourteen practices, like an infinity stone from a Marvel movie. You could use just one of them and it's powerful, but the more you combine, the more powerful it gets. So, and that's something that really pushes the book. Like you don't have to do all fourteen at once. You just kind of start rolling them out because everyone is powerful on it. So, so. Yeah.
I was, I'm just, I'm really excited for the high school math team at the beginning of the year. Last year they were kind of reading through the book and doing, you know, not trying some things necessarily, you know, I think probably from my seat, my perspective, um, and probably pushed a little bit, um, previous to that, included you in some professional development with personalized learning pathways, kind of the first thing for the pandemic hit and then, um, including, um, the team into some of the blended learning conversations and some of that piece, but I think one of the hardest parts really was trying to identify, given a specific content area and then the blended piece. Um, it was hard. And so the team had explored, like they said, um, the building thinking classrooms author and things that were blowing up. And when we looked a little bit closer at, at this book, because it's aligned to your content area, it makes more sense. And, um, many of these practices are aligned to those, that philosophy, that concept of of just it really cha-changing the, the classroom space, the environment and, um, for kids and that learning. So as we continue down this path of student-centered learning, this truly is student-centered learning. Really engaging kids, uh, more in, in what's happening in the classroom and getting them to think. So I just am very complimented, you know, complimentary of, uh, of the math, high school math team. Cause it's been a little bit of a journey, last few years of, um, finding, finding this, um, research to be able to implement in the classroom. And I think this is actually really exciting. So I'm trying to support them as much as possible as they go down this path.
Well, I think it's exciting when you see like all these guys burn that I've never been before. I think the days of sit we get are gonna go away. Kids don't learn that way anymore. We, we know, and these sort of things where we engage them and question them and because he's right, they probably just sit there and have more spaced out and that. You know, the challenge is for you guys, because now it's like people's pieces in and like everywhere in our district right now. It's not always like, oh, I can just go to the textbook and this is how it's this constant learning, working part. And I appreciate the guys doing the work. Now the question I have, how can we support it? Uh, as a board, how do we help you implement this over the next however long it's gonna take, you know, and, and, um, you know, let's bring it in here, if, you know, on a season to your habits, but whatever we need to do, because I think this is the right kind of work that we need to do for our students. Um, as far as engagement, um, because they can't just, you, you know, we've got to sit and get for a long time.
Yeah.
And so he's obviously the simple thing of standing him up and having him work problems on the board and regrouping them. Just that changed things. So this, I think this will be exciting time and, and kudos to you guys for going out and finding this. And being committed to doing it. Some things were fortuitous. He was in Des Moines, so that, that was a hard trip for us to go to, but it's, so.
And we were pursuing, sorry, the person we're bringing in here when we found out about Cedar Rapids thing. So then we did kind of people that, but that is something they might want to do in the future.
What's the feedback of the kids? Cause I, I think it would be, I mean, you get them up and, you know, working together. Is it bad? Hey, this is better or it's different? What's the consensus?
For me, it was different first semester versus second semester. Uh, my first semester kids were, were all in. That was great. So the newest thing. Second semester, apparently haven't bought in quite as much. And I thought it's the way I started, but I think we all, for us, would say that same thing. So. Yeah, it just really depends on the next of kids too. And, you know, sometimes like we get started with this, the beginning of a new, um, class. And then the kids just stick with that. All you have to do is put a warm-up up. And even if I don't group them that day, they'll group themselves and work on it. Like one of my classes does that all the time. And then another class right now, I put problems up on the board yesterday and there was a kid who, you know, took a picture of everyone and then sat down with her again. Did you know? So I, yeah, it's, I mean, and again, in that group I have it like it's a very small class, so it's a little harder to implement this when you have a smaller class. I mean, you don't want it to be too big, but this is like, I have a lot of kids. So you can only group them in groups of three, which is optimal in so many ways before it gets repetitive. So.
Well, I gotta imagine too, like, depending on what kind of math course it is too, probably makes it a little better or easier or is more conducive to this, right? Like certain classes is more detailed and you're going through it on a desk.
Right. And the idea that the, the, to, you get to where the, it was called thin slice your lessons. So you give the students one problem and they work to get that one. And then you like tier it up and they work to get that one without really doing instruction. So you're right in a like in a geometry class, like I can see how that's gonna work a little easier. Just geometry is more visual and intuitive, but in like pre-calculus, that would be really hard to do. The concepts are just advanced. There you might not be able to reach that step without some, some instruction, you know, especially if it's something new, they've never, have no background. But, yeah. So you're right. I think it'll, so the answer is you're using it across the board and all that, or you're using it in third grade levels or third, so. The working tasks on the board in small groups were pretty much using it across the board. Um, it's a little tough to say after. Well, it would be nice, right? Like how do you go down to that one? Yeah, but she does some though occasionally. Yeah. That's a college course. Yeah. But, yeah, and then it kind of depends too on the belief or the topic. Like some weeks I find I have like, I think, ooh, we didn't really do much of that this week. And then the next week I try to get more of it in. Um. And it offers that student agency in terms of, you had mentioned the individual that's, you know, pictures. The way that individual works best.
Right.
So I was like, okay, yeah. And some people like to, then have, you know, have sheet of paper, so from later, and they've worked everything up veritably. And you don't have them to go back to. So you know, you get it the same way. They can take a quick photo of that so you can have it to go back to. Yeah, no support and smaller numbers that um, twenty, you know, multiple three are great. Seven to thirty, we can, we start to move around.
Yeah, we don't have enough space.
Yeah, that's harder. And not that we have thirty, but no, um, twenty-four is tight. Yeah, my class is tight. Twenty-one, I've got some sections of twenty-one and that's enough to be able to move around, be able to get feedback and keep all of those groups moving. Too many groups and they kind of stall out and you can't get to everybody and, or you just run out of space. You know, then they're all, some of us through the six, and then they're getting on task versus then two groups, three. Yeah. Or something here. The first blow year.
So, yeah.
First blow one year?
Right.
Yeah. Cause we, we, the last spring that the admin group was letting us use the book study this year. We had already started reading it a little bit on our own, but we hadn't, like, formally done the book study published. Great, so it's, it grew, you know. Great, so it's in groups, you know.
Well, I'll be curious, I mean, so because of some of the work we're getting at the elementary level with new perspectives. Which heavily relies on students working together, students working on vertical spaces. Drawing on their tables and do, I mean, the thinking is incredible happening, so I'm 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 excited to see. As we kinda continue to improve and work towards. Where those kids have started here up to high school to see if you see a difference in terms of their responsiveness to, well, wow, we've done this all the time. Collaborating and working on vertical spaces and some of these other things. I'm kind of curious what that's gonna look like in the future. Any other questions? It was awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other two math teachers.
Alright, I'll be back guys, thank you again. Uh admin reports.
Yeah, so real quick, Holly and Mel will jump in here a little bit as we go, but I just wanted to give kind of an update on some of the. Big rocks and work that we're doing around social, emotional behavioral health and under our wellness pillar of a strategic plan that we're that we're currently working on. Just kind of share a little bit about our outcomes regarding this and um and again. There's a lot of work going into this, this this past year, this whole past year has really been digging into. What do we need to focus on, what are some of our major outcomes, um and exploring some different ideas and. Um I'm really kind of excited about some of this work and where we're where we're headed for for next year. I think we're putting some really solid things in place. Um but just some of these outcomes, just really trying to establish SCBH teams in each building as well as district wide. Um and each building having meaningful and purposeful conversations around social, emotional, behavioral health. Um one of our major outcomes um continue to be and will continue to be early next year and into the following year. Uh but trying to strengthen that tier one um instruction and support in the classrooms. And then looking at additional mental health professional development, um we brought in Teach to Heal, and I'm gonna let Holly and Mel talk a little bit about that. Speaker and consultant that we brought in and behavior interventions, behavior interventionists at, starting with the K five level, just. Um and then training that goes along with that. Um identifying school-based therapy provider, that's been a goal and we've identified that. Um reestablishing community wellness advisory group, that's still on the horizon. Few years ago, we started that. Um but have not quite gotten back to that, because we really wanna try to establish some of these bigger pieces, so that we. When we bring the community together, we can really talk about some of the things that we're doing and continue to improve the work. Um around that, and then really um spend some time in evaluating and determining, you know, that SEBH screener, which is the DESA, which is. Pretty expensive for us um to not get the results I think that we wanna see, um so exploring what. Additional opportunities are out there. Um so just really have a quick SEBH team and purpose, each building level has one. Purpose of these teams are to analyze data and evidence of students' needs related to social, emotional, behavioral, mental health. And to identify structures and strategies within their buildings to be able to support the work that needs to happen, to be able to support our kids. So it's not just social, emotional learning, it is everything, body, mind. Um and really thinking through, you know. How do we help intervene when a student is in crisis and supporting them? Um strengthening tier one, again, so right now, um. We're looking at Character Strong, that's a PK twelve curriculum. It's probably the first one we've seen, it's actually goes all the way up to twelfth grade. Um and it's very adaptive, middle school is actually in a pilot right now and doing a study with them. And Mike, you can jump in here and and share anything you want to on that, but. Um but it comes with tier two intervention resources as a built-in screener, which we wanna look at, which. It's built into that curriculum, it's gonna be directly aligned to that curriculum, it also has a component where students can kind of. Evaluate themselves and where they sit, it's similar, I believe it's similar to uh what the state of Iowa is considering adopting. I mean, I mean, they think they've adopted it, but really trying to push it up statewide. Um. And trying to, we're trying, I mean, the process, we're kind of in the process of vetting it to make sure it kind of aligns to what it is that we we wanna make sure. Align to our values as well as aligns to what we wanna try to get to, and they really are promoted as more of a a really a character. Skill building um curriculum to support kids. Uh that way, uh as well as just some of the adaptation that can be done with that curriculum in short amount of time or spurts. As well as the tier two kind of lessons and support that way, I don't know, Mike, you've kinda got your eyes on it a little bit at middle schools through that study.
Um the fact that it's gone really well, um partially because we were set up in a manner, we committed to the importance of a home. Based on type setting, morning meeting type environment, um and it's just slid into that time extremely well. Uh the challenging part is uh we got fourteen teachers involved in it, so that means. Several others are not, and just kind of continuing the excitement of those teachers to. Not spoil the integrity of the high of the fitness. We're really pleased to.
And and we're gonna bring a trainer in uh uh May thirty-first. Um with middle school right now, just to kinda keep the momentum going and so then bring everybody along and onboard. But then having conversations, K twelve, okay, a- and piloting some of these things, because part of, because we agreed to be a part of this pilot study. Um we get uh everything free for at least a year for next year, middle school will be for life. I believe because they participate in the study, but elementary will get to have access for a year. K five will get to have access for a year next year, so we can start to play and get it. The SEBH, SEBH, mental health professional development, um. We're looking at, we're exploring Scanlon Center um at the University of Iowa of Mental Health for um. By high school level, um providing them some more professional development and support that way. Um Teach to Heal framework, which we just have kind of officially launched last week on Thursday with. Our consultant Danielle Tice, who is the founder of Teach to Heal, um credible and credible speaker. Behavior interventionists, we're looking at uh what we're going to. Establish a behavior interventionist role at L- at Lakeview and SIS, um that will be an associate. Um with some specialized training and their role will be to respond. Um and intervene for students who are dysregulated in the classroom and. They're gonna go through and actually principals and associates are gonna go through training this summer, um it's called Life Space Crisis Intervention. Um and it's a, it's basically a series of interventions that when a student becomes dysregulated. Working through each of those interventions um to support that student, so that we can get them back into the classroom and being successful. Um in the classroom, Holly and Mel, wanna talk a little bit more about the Teach to Heal.
Sure. Um. We started off with it being a counselor as an administrator and. Training, I guess you can say, in Des Moines, where we learned a little bit more about it and. I needed to go to the first session, I had some things pop up in the building that I had to stay back for. Um but the second session, it was right away, we knew like this was gonna be something that could work really well for us. Um the more that we have worked with Danielle, we've had her come to our building now twice. Um and the first time she came, the sole purpose was just observe and get to know our tool and the things that she might provide feedback for us on. Um and right away, she had a couple of ideas that we just went ahead and kinda ran with. Just some building-wide expectations and routines and systems, procedures and things that we. Immediately tried to change, and it's like little stuff, like the way we set up our tables in the lunchroom and where we place our adults, just to help. Manage that behavior, so um we made some few changes there, we changed our. This, even though little bits have been enough for our staff to be like to, it didn't work really well. And even in the midst of April and going into it, it can get really, really hard. Because kids get really, really antsy, teachers get really, really antsy. And everything just kind of hiked up, and it's helping from the lower level to the building. Um and so when she was able to come back the second time, we only had our all CLT training. Um she was able to see some of that progress as well, but then the teachers heard. Her message and got to hear and learn from her. At one teacher put um at our CLT. Um the week before, I guess I'm staffing them on it. They said, I think we were all about ready to like cry along with her, like she wasn't crying, but like, because it was like leaving the girls, by the way, much. Um and thinking about some of her kids, so. Listening to her, they had even more um understanding and that even though we're doing what we're working towards. And I'm super excited about it.
Yeah, I would echo everything, Mel said, I think one thing for Lakeview that was super powerful with Danielle coming was like, as we think about. The bond and like the physical structure and changes to Lakeview, she was able to give a lot of feedback on like, even just like. Paint to the physical things that can make a huge difference for kids. Feeling welcome and and understanding flow and like, where am I supposed to go when I enter this space and things like that, so that. Those people don't have anxiety, um. Then it's just been super helpful to like actually have her with us and walking through and seeing exactly what we see every day. Um and then I just, we both sent out a staff survey with feedback and just. Blooming out of the water, just held positive, like, thank you for the opportunity, I really enjoyed the presentation and looking forward to more, great training, thank you so much. Very helpful, um. Where's, I've never gotten goosebumps from PD before, in all seriousness, I believe the approach to. Education is now more than ever going to start with the research that Danielle discussed, I mean, that's three pages, so I'm just like. Positive after a positive, excited for Danielle to return, how do I even start sifting through my questions, I just want her to come back. You know, just like, it it's been super, super positive, um. And I think teachers are seeing. The impact it can have on all kids, um. And so that's just been really, really exciting, they're they're very excited in math in May and March. And Danielle was from where?
She's from Oatana, uh Minnesota, she works currently for a school district, a larger school district up there. Where she's implemented these things in those buildings. Danielle has, uh I think she said thirty-three years of experience, but a lot of that experience has been with. The most challenging and most challenging kids, I think she's been a principal of like a special school. Um and working with some of those most significant, um those most significant meetings. Now, I think the most thing, I think the things that are most striking about Danielle is she she seemed, when you first see her, she seemed, oh man, she looks. Tough and mean, and she's not at all, she's got great stories and great, just great ideas and. Um really engaging in terms of thoughtful reflection on what is it that we need for our. Our our physical space, our environment, what is it that we need to do for our culture, that's gonna be another huge piece that we're gonna address next year. She's gonna come, so we're we're in this for the long haul for her, with her for for a while. Um just because having that outside perspective and coach to be able to support the work that we're doing and ask some of the tough questions. That maybe we're not always willing to ask ourselves, to be able to push on some things. Um and and really just help us, um so she's gonna come back on May thirty-first. And one of the pieces here, and if you look at this, this is the framework, it's not a curriculum. It's, it's not a list of to-do items, it really is broken into phases. And our first phase is gonna deal with role definitions, so in our building. Do you have a behavior interventionist, what's their role, what's principal's role, what's your role as a classroom teacher, what's your role as an associate, what's your role as a. A potentially a kitchen worker and and with students with that are dysregulated or show behavior or how do you support that? Um. We'll get into Life Space Crisis Intervention over the summer. Um but a huge, this is all part of phase one, it's culture and environmental management for for next year. So we're gonna have her come back a few more times, she's been consult with us, she wants to be. The the great thing is she wants to be onsite in our buildings. To observe, like Polly Mel said, actually what's happening in buildings and be able to just provide guidance and support. Um so we've ju- we've already established that relationship, actually College Community is um contracting with her as well. So I've already started to hook up with them to find out are there ways that we can share. Um some of that support with Danielle, since we're neighbors and and do some partnership, so. Um. School-based therapy, super excited about this, so Tanager Place, we have a contract um ready to go. Uh with them, um it'll be onsite therapist, there'll be a referral process but in place. Supporting families and identifying additional services if necessary through that. Um. One of the things that we have to make sure, and I don't think this will be a problem, is having a minimum of twenty-five students on kind of their roster. So we'll have a person assigned to only song, and they will cover our four buildings. Um. Uh of course, there's a billing insurance piece there, but they'll provide guidance for families because it is, I mean, it's a, it's it's therapy. Um the cost of the district would be fifteen thousand per year for for some of the support. Um which we think would be worth it, and the big thing is we've heard from families. And I think this will be a really good thing, so parents don't have to initially take off work to take their child to a therapy appointment. Um it'll be, I think, a faster connection with services to support families. Um of course, there's a, it's, it it also requires, because I mean, it's an outside service provider, it also requires um permission. Um. From from families, from parents to be able to access this. Um but we can make referrals to them and ask the, you know, talk to families. Um so we think this is a good step in the right direction to be able to support.
There's a minimum, is there a maximum? Before we load the bank on the fifteen thousand?
Well, I think it's twenty-five, twenty-five.
Or every twenty-five, it's fifteen, no.
Cause that would be, that's, that'd be a full case load of for one.
So they're in the building every day.
Yep, and so one of the, one of the big pieces is, we're gonna have to organize and figure out, okay, which day are they gonna be in which building? How many, what 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 would you consider a case load at Lakeview versus high school versus middle school, so. Those would be conversations with Tanager, um they were, they they came and visited with us, felt very. Great about um the services, they've got lots of information, they've been through this before with other districts. Um that they currently serve, so um we we wanna see how this goes, I think this is just a really good step in the right direction for us.
I think one thing, one thing that's exciting about that is like, we'll have access to that therapist, so then we can like. Check in and partner with them versus when kids seek outside therapy, we don't always have signed. Consent, if, you know, you're tracking down a therapist, you're trying to get on, going with them to talk about like, hey, what language are you using? What skills are you teaching, how can we do the same, where like they're in our building every week, so we'll know on Tuesday I can check in and say. Hey, this week's been rough, what are, you know, how can we partner together more closely? So I'm excited about that piece of it, and just having access to that therapist and be able to like team closer for kids.
And then just additional considerations, I've seen a community advisor committee. Working to reestablish that at some point here, and then reviewing the screener DESA, I mean, as of right now, we're kind of recommending. Kind of maybe eliminate that, it's fair, it's fairly, fairly, fairly expensive. Um and that we. Think this year we spent just over eleven thousand dollars. For the whole battery of. The screener, so. K twelve.
Probably they really constructed that, right, like when we get that started initially.
Obviously, we have a huge pause in the middle, um. You know, I just, I have inside voice in my house who tells me about some of these things, and I'm just excited that we're um. This kind of ties in with the whole kind of district. In the back, but we're trying to use every student where they are emotionally, academically. You know, and then the most important thing with that is we have to equip those people that are with them all the time. To do those things, and um when we get a bunch of buy-in from teachers, they get really excited. Uh and you know, we're doing some new work and and um, no, obviously, this is, we've also, this epidemic. You know, our kids are are exposed to so many weird things now that we weren't on that, you know, phone. Um and so they they go through things, we don't understand this whole greater people. Um but no, we're just having those resources to help us. Um the fact that you're gonna be able to reach out and uh I see. In our business pantry inside it, where we get free for life. You know, but I mean, just trying to find different ways to to do this that is. You know, but I mean, just trying to find different ways to, to do this that is financially responsible. Uh, but also effective, well, if the Dessa doesn't work, then it doesn't work for us, um, but. The, hopefully. In the next tier of things, we, we find those things, cause we can have all the supports in the world, but if we can't identify who needs them, it doesn't matter. And so those are the things I think are, are exciting, cause I think we're moving towards that. And Davis and I talked about this a long time ago. I don't care what part of our community, if it's academics, if it's, um, music, fine arts, if it's art, if it's athletics. All of these kids are better served when they can deal with this. You know, I mean, we deal with the coaching, I'm sure you dealt with it on the color factor, you know? It's not like you're, this has been isolated in the building, it's in all of our staff, so, um, you know, also. You know, I think about, we need to reach out to those other people that are going to touch these kids. Must drivers and, and coaches and, and people who are actually supporting our district, so.
I think one thing with the character strong survey too is that students pick it. So as the adults that do the death of screen, we can only identify to have outward behaviors and are struggling that way. Where when students self-identify, they might have internalizing behaviors that we don't know about, and so being able to compare like. The students reported information versus teacher reported information, we can catch. Like there's a safety net, so we can catch all kids versus why don't see that happening, well. Some of our kids have really great coping skills that we all never see it, but when they're self-reporting it, then you can put services in place, so. I'm excited for that with like character strong trying that out, cause we don't get that information with Dessa. Um, so if it's already built in, like, that's just a huge win for us that we've been in, we need more if it needs. Then what we can.
The high school has always been a struggle. They've gotten some of us, you know, you know, at the afternoon and then sometimes. It's affected me, urge from our students, voices that it's. Maybe not as.
Yeah, and that's what we're at, yeah.
So is this, is this, hopefully, I'm assuming that this might.
Well, I mean, at the middle school level, I think that was a struggle too, identifying something that would, would. That you could adapt within those lessons, cause I think Mike, what, what, what would provide fifteen minutes? You know, and so I think how Character Strong has done it is they've broken some of those lessons down, so you can teach them over. I think a series of lessons or you can really just focus on the fifteen minutes. Um, is that right?
Yeah. And then, you know, it's worked well right now, um. Looking ahead to the home implementation, um, we have our home, home is pretty, four kinds of reading. And they don't have, that would be a hundred and sixty. Different lessons, it's kind of like seventy-five, so. A lesson in two days really. Probably the most viewed analysis.
And that, like you're saying, that's gonna be challenging, the high school, they don't have a whole starting day.
That's what, yeah, they've been really struggling with that at high school, so we're hoping that.
Do you think it'll weave it into the curriculum?
I think that's how we, I think that's how they would envision doing that. Cause that's what they're, kind of trying to do that this year, but I think that's, this is gonna be again, some exploration next year, how does this work and what does this look like and. Yeah, just two, last two things quick. So the Teach to Heal right now, the scope is preschool through fifth grade. And that's a recommendation by Danielle and us having some conversations as a team. Um, so that it's focused and so we can put our resources where we need to put them and get things going. Um, then the goal would be then to sh- to start to move this framework up into the middle school and then eventually to the high school.
Um, yeah, we wanna start small so that we can keep our hands around and be very successful and then expand that success out.
And the last thing, that, that, uh, grant that we were awarded, that state grant fifty-two thousand, that's what's paying for all this, the consulting and all that. This year, I'm looking at other, I've identified another resource to support some professional development as well as we have some other sources of. That we can use to continue this work next year.
But it might be interesting just to ask her, since she's been, you know, she's been principal. How would you leave this into your high school? Cause she'll probably, she's probably experienced, you know? And so, you know, it might have more to cope for us. With our block schedule, you know, and you don't always have kids and you're comfortable. So I mean, it's.
Good. It's good stuff.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you for, yeah, everybody's input on that.
Yeah.
Um. We got superintendent update.
And I'm gonna pass my update to Amber. Talk about B S A P. A program we're very proud of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you mind just like?
Uh, so this.
You got any side with that?
Yes. Yeah, well, every day's exciting. I was ready.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, so here I am, um, and you all got some time to look over the, the. The Patso. On the table, put together. Um. Obviously, you know. Feeling good about where we're seeing. Our expenditures and our revenue and, um. Working through the budget with Pat is. Place helpful for me, the way she helps pull things out, and maybe I don't recognize, or the way that we can talk to it, um. Me understanding how things look at B S P. Um, when she can say, oh yeah, that's a great idea, so. Yeah. So it's great to have that energy on. Okay, enrollment, so yeah, we're like at one seventy this year. Obviously, we're heavy on the preschool end. Um, we're also heavy on the, um, intermediate and middle school, well, intermediate and I would say mostly this. One of those, what? Um, so I'm happy with those numbers and this week we are currently. Holding registration for next school year and for summer, um, and, uh, from what I can tell, we're gonna be. Having various similar numbers, um, if not greater. Tuition rates have not changed, um. So, and this one, I think, I'll tap. May stake the same. And if you don't mind, I may not look at my paper and read this.
Do you have a kind of a cap, Amber? We're kind of.
Two oh one.
Two oh one.
Um, but also I would say a cap as far as, um, space and staffing, um. I just have done sort of a, a pretty, I don't know. Three or four, three or four program reads have just come on. Program reads are like high school kids that just come on in like the last couple of months. Um, and what's really cool about that is, um. They just, with the state of Iowa, changed, um, a lot, so previously if you had a sixteen-year-old working for you, which is the oldest I hire at. Um, they couldn't, they couldn't, um, be in like a room or studying alone with the students. So then it was always like, hey. I have these teenagers that want to come work, but I can't leave them alone, so then you have to have other people. Anyway, after COVID, they changed it, and now a sixteen-year-old can't be in a room that has some children. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna let every sixteen-year-old that works for you be in that position, but there are some kids who are just like. They're not needed to go, they can handle it, so, um. It's really freaked me up to bring in those younger students and kind of see. You know, what can you shoulder for responsibility? Can you make the decisions on the block of Lippies considering your hair and, um. So, yeah, that's my normal, right? All right. Um. So we spent summertime twenty-two with our weekly swimming class to the Chipton and Mount Vernon pool. Um, we average about eighty students each swimming trip. So we take two school buses, um, I am, they do not go on a field trip if I am not there, so I am attending every single field trip. Uh, we do roll calls. Obviously, swimming is a very serious business, and so that's why they don't go if I'm not there, um. I feel like. As a leader of the program, you know, I'm up walking around showing staff, I think this is what we want to make sure that we're doing. Making sure that the students under standard expectations when we're at the pool. Um, and we always go to Chipton and we always go to Mount Vernon. The lifeguard staff know us. They do their trainings, so in fact, for our kids, prior to swimming, um, it's just nice to have that familiar place that everybody understands. Yeah, um. So the older kids went to Adventureland, we went to Camp Wakanda, we also went to Lost Island. Um, our summer theme last year was kindness, kindness is our jam. Um, students painted and like kindness rocks, um, around the community. We completed our second, um, title mural. Do you guys remember in twenty nineteen? We did a mural, we had the artist come in, we painted tiles, um, and it was this whole quote about be the nice kid. Um, and then we installed that on the wall kind of by the ends of the office. I had that same artist come in and create another tile mural with the kids, um, and we did another. Quote, um, by Brian Stavna, so it's the same guy. Well, come to find out, this be the nice kid is like a real popular thing, and he comes and does school visits, and so. It was fun to finally be like, you guys did this mural. Brian Stavna's coming, they're gonna talk to you about why he says this, because of why they matter and why they matter in his life. Um, he's from Minnesota, he's a golf pro type. And, and he does this too. So anyway, he spent the day with us at Lakeview, and that was really cool, and he had fun, she hung out with the kids, and. It was great, it was really fun, it was a great day. Um. So we completed the second mural, Brian Stavna came, um. So, yeah, it was a very good experience. The school year has been just as busy, um, students have spent no school days doing, we came up here and had a movie. Um, we painted twelve fire pools. We had a visit from Yulish Wego Puppet Theater. Um, and we worked really hard to use the space on Lakeview as best we can. It's quite challenging, but we're all working together, all this and I got to. Um, and, um. We just got it, the new projector was installed in the small gym. Which I don't even wanna call it the small gym anymore, cause I, I don't look at kids use any balls in there because of the screen. Um, so we're really excited about that. We're waiting on some speakers, so we can like really amplify and hear the sound better. But otherwise, it's really, it's cool to have it down where we are all at, versus deciding if it's actually. So then we're kind of dispersed and that always makes it a little tough. Um. The B S P staff have been working through several trainings over the past few months. I think in total we had four, so we just, we finished our last staff training, um, at the end of March. We have the gal who comes in and just training with us, she's really awesome. And we do that after hours, so we work our shift, and then from six to eight is when we're on training. Um, so I'm grateful for them, um, working past brother and her's program hours to continue to learn. Um, I applied and was accepted through Iowa after. School Alliance to participate in a leadership series. There are six sessions total. Um, I've already learned so much about my leadership style and, um, it's really something that I've looked forward to, um. You know, and it's all via Zoom, but in which I thought would feel really, you know, cause I didn't do a lot of that at all, um. That's been really great, it's been really great. Um, okay, I just look forward to. Learning more and, um, continuing to strengthen B S P for our families and our staff, so. Yeah, and pictures are the best. That was our quote this past summer. And this is, you know, and so the kids, they did a, um, they did their puppet show and then. They brought all the supplies and the kids got to make, um, finger puppets and then take those home. And then those are our two murals. And the one with, um, the one on the right that I'm looking at, that was our. First mural, and then the one on the left that I'm looking at was our second mural that we just completed, and that one's in the lunchroom, so it's cool.
Obviously, each service chapter, you know, with our families and like, you know. All everyone's kids have benefited somewhat, so whatever, I appreciate it, um. You know, obviously, sometimes you get thrust into this position and, uh, it's exciting to know, you know. These leadership courses and things that are, um, can kind of help. And support you in any way and, and, um, and just, you know, all of a sudden. Have, um, seen your program and appreciate your role.
Yeah, it's really interesting, like over the years, really, for a long time, there was nothing for. You know, school-aged care providers for, you know, professional development, and there just really wasn't anything that was drilled down and specific for us. Um, and then, gosh, I don't even know, maybe it was like. Two thousand eight? I don't know, two, something like that. Um, they started doing just once a year, they do an after-school conference in Des Moines, and. So great, and you drive there and it was a couple of days, and you know, that was good too, and now they're like finally speaking, and so. You're seeing, you know, Iowa After School Alliance, promoting some worship, you know, workshops and, um. You're kind of seeing like other companies pop up with these conferences and workshops, so it's just nice to kind of get that sort of. You want feedback, right? But you want feedback from somebody who gets or understands, kind of knows what you're doing in the day out, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm really lucky that I got accepted into that and it's been awesome.
So I'm looking at the word twenty twenty-one. September twenty twenty-three, that's in years where it grew.
Uh huh. Uh huh.
That's forty more kids.
Yeah. So I'm.
Janice tried to go run for copies because she read them in copies at our Facebook preview night, because there were some individuals that wanted. It worked. Gave me chills, like, oh. Not a good chill.
Yeah, so, um. One of the women who works preschool B S P summer for us, and she's a school time associate, but, um. She had helped her in preschool preview, and I was like. You know, really trying hard to get these numbers together and like, you know, get a list going for summertime, and so I had, it's like a. It's like you group the kids going into preschool and the kids who, um, have finished preschool. They're rooting out for the summer, and she walked in with a plaque and a plaque, I said, don't look at that list. Because there's so many, I said, don't look. So, yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the best, it's like. It's good.
It's a good, it's a good. So, so, um, what do you need, I mean, this is the state of it, but what you. Is there, do you have a list of like wants and needs and? Or is that something that you could come up with?
I mean, really, it's just usable space, not shared space, not shared space. I mean, not like a gym, I'm talking like John thinks that there could be a classroom, but.
That you then then.
The like usable. Community addressed spaces, you know? I don't know, if you wanna do something specific. A whole B S P.
That and the bond.
Anyway.
Well, it's good to know, like you said, proof is gonna keep coming, so. You're doing such a good job and it's growing and, you know, it's, uh. It's gonna be, and it's something that attracts people to this community, so, yeah, we need to keep our eye on it.
I wouldn't like lost without the rubber, so. I do appreciate you having on you, like, keep it, like, it can be very mindful of what spaces are leaving, cause. Teachers are in there, students are, you know. They have phone calls tonight, our grandparent, they have phone calls to make after school and things like that, so. Usual spaces that we won't invade teachers' space. You know, they're still trying.
And what's on this to cut off, is it? By thirty or so, it's simple.
Yeah, I'm so thankful that we were able to. Put a constant rate over.
Mm-hmm.
So that's something that goes for. The money, the budget.
Yeah. The sun making have a market. Right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good evening. All right. So. Board committee updates, um. We kind of kick it to, uh, Jamie here. We had a construction manager at risk meeting, uh, yesterday. Exploring options and just kind of like, what's the process, right? We've got a big. Bond deal here and, and we've got a lot of projects and so I'll let you kind of discuss what we went through.
Yeah, we had, um. Also, just some meetings. Previous to that day, just to try to put things in, in order of what. Importance, kind of, or not importance, but what order we can. Kind of, not importance, but what order we can do things in, so we have to space them out. We don't get all money all at the same time, so we can't just go getting busters on all of them. So we kind of prioritize. The order of the way that things are, we think should probably happen that line up with the money. When it comes, so money comes in waves and so you have to, so we, the. Let's see, the first thing that we wanna tackle that will work with the money and. And everything that way is the addition to the intermediate school, already have the plans. Already drawn up, some things are already in place, but we do wanna meet with the current staff. And review and make sure if there's any tweaks or anything like that that we need to do because needs change. Even over a few years, so we're gonna do that in that first. Let's see, that would be either the. Summer, you know, before or after summer break, whenever we can get together with those. And then we'll put that one out for bid in fall of twenty-three. Construction to start in spring of twenty-four, so that one should be starting to roll along. In the meantime, also the new transportation building, which we're getting close to having everything finalized. And where we are, and that one kind of interject into there. Is that we have an agreement with the sign company for the easement, so we have that all figured out. We just need to finalize all of that, have all the signatures on everything that we need to be. And then get everything with the assets, so there's the building property, but also the asset, so we get all of it all. Straightened and lined up and then the purchase date originally was July first. We tried to, we're going to try to move it up and then had a little few bumps in the road, so we're, it looks like we're gonna keep sticking with July first. So that'll finalize, once that's finalized, we can start doing the updates that we need to do on that building. To get it up to where we can use it for the means that we want. Once we get the intermediate project done, we can move. Third grade up there and then we'll have some more space at Lakeview and then we can really tackle getting that renovation done. We'll have fewer kids to work around and be able to do a really good job down there. Next. We talked with I S G about a site, we don't really necessarily, we're not. Solid on where we're gonna put the new indoor activity space, so we're still working through all that, that'll be. Next on the list, and then after that. Somewhere in there, let's see, the stadium surface, that's also something we're looking at summer of twenty-four. For the state to review the stadium surface, we can test, we're gonna work best with. All the working parts and all the kids that need to use the field and all of that, central office. And the building over here, that's kind of, when we get down to that, that'll be, that'll be last on the list. So and then we did meet with a few teams about the. Just to explore what that looks like and if that's the right choice for us, that kind of thing, so.
We gotta put a group, since I've heard from some people in the community. So when we pick a construction manager, I don't know about the at-risk one, sometimes they come with their own packages and they come with their own people. And so I then reached out to a lot of people, someone who run these, some of these businesses and do some of this stuff, but they don't necessarily. Have to have the work, but they wanna be able to bid the work. Do you know what I mean? And so sometimes what happens if you, if let's say it was Story, Story has these groups they work with. And where people is the correct, and so the people, someone that are like, eh, well, we just want a chance to bid.
Well, and the thing that we kind of talked about too, and yesterday, they were all pretty good about that, not that we're going that direction, but they mentioned that. And they said, hey, we know in a community like this, there's people that do certain lines of work. And it bodes well if you can kind of support, you know, people that wanna support the school, the community, or have a chance, it sounds like that's open.
And that can certainly be something, when we write up an R F P, that that's part of the R F P.
And then, I mean, we're not exclusively give it to those people, but as long as they have an opportunity, be a participant.
One of the presenters actually said that they would even break out smaller chunks of a project. So that a local person might not be able to take on the whole project, who would break out a part of.
And he, you know, paints and does that stuff.
That's what they brought up as a painting type deal.
Right, and that, and he just didn't even have an opportunity, you know, and he's like, I don't get it, but you know, it would've been nice. You know, I've been a part of this community for a long time and I think I just, you know, this is, is their money and they should at least have an opportunity to be part of it.
Absolutely, and again, they brought it up and they've seen that in other districts, so I think it's, it's a positive.
Well, we talked about, it's one thing, we're gonna have a major, you know, major project with that addition. But then we're gonna have maybe a smaller scale project when it comes to the transportation, so. Do we, do we need a C M for that, or is that something that we just do on our own?
For sure.
So these are questions and conversations we're still having too.
They're continuing in conversation.
It sounds like you already have one, I just wanted to.
And the law changed, what was it, just not that long ago, so it's been new, even the guys kind of coming in and presenting. It's new to them as well.
So tell me about that, I mean, just two sentences, what's the ask at-risk construction manager versus what we had before?
They will be coming, go ahead.
No, go ahead. With the C M, no risk, they go ahead and bid out of the contracts, but we own them. It, we have to basically, the buck, we manage them and we own them, so if something goes wrong, it's on us to.
Figure it out.
Figure it out. With the C M, risk, they, they do everything like that, but they own the contract, so. Think about the C M at-risk, basically the same as a general contractor. The difference being, when you go out, like we did for the intermediate school, here are all the plans, we put them out. And then we just wait to see who gets low bid with what general contractor gets it. We have a little more discrepancy at the C M at-risk, but they also are on the front end of the design. Because then they can say, you know, they can work with that architect and said, uh, no, I don't think that doesn't make sense, or we can adj, you know.
You're gonna have problems.
They try to control the cost and then they put it out for bid and they own the contracts. So if there's overage, it's on them. Cuz they own the contract.
And then I will see, you know, what, you know, I mean, this is more early for that, but what's that?
And then we're gonna explore like the process of having a R F Q, R F P, like there's, so we're gonna be learning, but we've had good conversations, I got a lot out of. The meetings yesterday, though, I think we all had good discussion.
Shared the conversation with, with I S G structure, they've already do work with. At, C M's at-risk, they've got a list of ones that they've done great work with.
And that's been happening on the private side for a while, this is now new to the public. So it's not like they don't have any experience in that world, but.
Yeah, it's a little bit dance with the public.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
I'll just go with our policies. So I, I, I read through them, and there, there's a few things, but, and I talked to Davis briefly about it, and a lot of the things that we had in there. Before, like, we decided to keep and then now we're, I think Tim wants to get rid of them now, even though I think. Which is fine, but I think the most important policy that I wanna talk about is the nurses came to us with the question, if it's more than our can. To be able to give, so if they find you not responsive students, okay, you know, the two things you basically think about is this diabetic. Thing, or is this, you know, an archonic thing? And so we need to sit down and talk with them, but basically, they would have some in each building. So that they could, you know, I mean, especially with the opioid epidemic, you know, we're a little bit in a shelter bubble here. But that probably isn't gonna last for forever, and so Tim and I haven't been able to sit down and talk with them about that, but that, that's something. Just immediately, I would be all for, just because, I mean, that's lifesaving type of stuff. And, you know, I, I just, my thing is, who's gonna prescribe it, those sort of things.
Strategy, vision angles, you and I have not connected, but I did get enough change to speak with Josh and Davis a little bit, so. I really enjoyed our conversation, I thought it went really well, talking about what is the data that we wanna get after and how we wanna track. Progress over time, thinking about the growth modeling that the state uses, and it would bend ugly about that. And considering using our N W A scores and servicing that more here. As well as interstate community, so one of the ways which we can start to share a little bit more. Not waiting for the, letting your book card to come out at the end, for the end of the year, I S A assessments and. Doing really a lot of stuff in that, we really wanna consider other ways in which we can measure progress to make them achievement. And that was one of the ideas we talked about, what were some of the other ways?
Well, yeah, I think the big one was N W A, we need to look at expanding that a little more. And then I think just another big conversation really was just communication with the community and staying ahead of the curve and being able to. Put out more frequent communications to our website, we've got all the tools. Just trying to establish routines of, and sharing, hey, here's what's happening, you know. Even just a strategic plan like S E V H, communicating, communicating, here's where our achievement scores are, and this is what it looks like.
So we believe that the state adopted Panorama as its statewide data analytics tool.
Yeah, kind of, yeah, trying to dig into that, I mean, the discussion also centered around a dashboard. The data dashboard and being able to communicate.
That's what Panorama is supposed to do, that the state is, yeah, rolling out.
I made some meager attempts at using Google to try and do that, but I think there's probably better options.
But and, and the question that we talked about, states rolling out Panorama, they're gonna be discounting Panorama. But will it be for more than just the Iowa assessments? Will we be able to put our own assessments on that platform, on that dashboard? We really feel like we've got some really good data through the benchmark assessment, through N W A, through, you know, so that we want our community to be able to access. That really gives a true, truer, uh, real-time type of where are we at, instead of a one-time annually.
Well, those are hard, I mean, having kids and stuff, I can only imagine for staff and teachers trying to put that together and. You know, the one time too was, first time it was digital, was that last year for some of those kids?
Yes, it was.
Again, there's so many different factors, but, you know, I think it's gonna be good that you're involved in that too, cuz that's in your real house, so.
Makes me wonder if kids are gonna have to sit down and write.
So, probably the biggest conference ever in the educational space just happened last week with. This week, last week, remember, A S U G S B. It was every single panel was talking about A I and. They did, they launched a new, we can get into it, but they did, I. Also what's going on, they launched a new product. Connect with that, this seems pretty good. Dreambox is, you see. So yeah, Dreambox and the Bill Gates Foundation, there's lots are going on there and I know we talked about extending Dreambox to go beyond. What we're currently used now and it integrates with it anyway, right?
We just need, yeah, I was gonna, cuz that was the other thing, I was gonna reach out to them and make sure.
I think the more we can have that vertical, vertical articulation of how students are growing from.
Strategic.
Also, we have to know strategic.
Governance. Well, wellness community.
We good? Uh, let's go ahead, consent agenda items, is there anything in here that anybody needs to pull out or?
I would like to pull out number five.
Alright, pull out contracts and we slide that in action items, is that where we'll put it? We're just.
Yeah, I, now, correct me if I'm wrong, is it something? We can, we pull to talk about in consent? Or do, do you have to make a motion to move it to action, or can we just move it to action? Make a motion to move that to action item, yeah, so we can, and we'll discuss it.
Alright, so we got a motion by Jamie to move, second by Coons, all in favor, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries, so we'll move that down.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, minus the contracts, as presented.
Alright, motion by Coon, second by Wolf, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, none, motion carries. Action items, so we'll start off with. Number one, acceptance of the March seventh, twenty twenty-three canvas elections. So we might need some language there is.
We, you just accept that it passed. Davis can, or Josh can pull it out, the information is in there. Just wanna keep going down, down farther. Canvas of elections, yeah, we get this from the Johnson County auditors, it's the abstract, just explaining to us. You can kind of scroll down, it was attached for you guys to take, how it did and what the votes were and you guys just accept the results.
So for motion to accept the, or seven outcome of the election. Motion by Coons. Second by Rockholtz. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, none, motion carries. We're on number two. This one will just be, uh.
This is a bond.
Yep, and so the language whoever approves will just have to say.
A motion to approve the resolution authorizing issuance, issuance. Of not to exceed twenty-five million five hundred thousand dollars in the general obligations. School bond and living tax for the payment thereof.
Okay, uh, so motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Rockholtz, will need to take roll.
Uh, yes, Wolf, so, yep, Rock, Rockholtz. Coons. Leska. And to make no Brown is absent.
Alright, so motion carries. Number three, resolution approving the second amendment to real estate purchase agreement, addendum, sorry.
This, this is the agreement to purchase the truck shop, our new transportation site. And there was an addendum that needed to be made to the original because of the adjustment with the easement. So, and, and then I think, I believe, because we ran into that hiccup, there are some attorney fees that they're gonna cover. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving second addendum to real estate purchase agreement.
Second.
Motion by Rockholtz, second by Wolf, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, none, motion carries. Number four, bond council, council and disclosure engagement agreement proposed issuance of approximately nine million nine hundred ninety thousand. Uh, general obligation school bonds, series twenty twenty-three.
Pat, this is a tool, is this to allow allers to manage it? Yeah.
Motion to approve the bond council and disclosure engagement agreement proposal. Issuance of approximately nine million nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Dollars, general obligation school bond series two thousand twenty three parentheses, the bond.
Good job. Motion by Rokols, second by Wolf, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, motion carries. Thank you. All right, first reading of board policy four hundred series.
Kind of what we discussed with more, um. You know, the changes have been made. So much more aggressive than I lose.
This, then this does not have the eight hundred one that you were talking about.
Right.
Because there's some adjustments, but just today I received an email from ISB. There's a series of about twelve. Like from different ones that are all different, so I'm gonna just put that all in. Together and send you and Tim those like twelve to look at.
Yeah.
And, um.
That is scattered throughout the.
Yeah.
Series.
Like the miscellaneous ones. And Josh does have the other one about the eight hundred and one series, so. We'll get together with you guys on that here in the next month.
Okay.
So hopefully it'll be the first reading of those miscellaneous ones next month, the second reading of the four hundred series. Along with that.
Yeah, but I believe the changes that. You and Tim looked at were either aligned to guidance from ISB or.
Clarification.
Clarifications, uh, changes that ISB might have made tweaks tweaks on, or there are ones that. ISB says we don't need and we have, so it's possibly striking those just out of our.
Right, yeah.
What's the changes in the social media social network?
So I can speak to that a little bit. Um, Sean, our director of technology. Is went through all of that and there's some things, uh, currently that are allowed through emails and stuff like that within the staff. That we need to kind of lock down a little bit and he went through all of that, um, information to.
And highlight, we highlighted anything that.
Yep.
It's a lot of.
More security.
Correct, and workplace appropriateness.
Yeah.
Like.
Using.
Shouldn't be using your email for this, you should, you know, some of the things where you're really separating. Your work from your personal, not just. Not just the in school, out of school, but specifically in.
And again, some of these changes too, it just helps. It helps, um, educate staff and protect staff because what a lot of staff don't realize is. If they're using work email, that's public email, like it's subject to FOIA.
Yeah.
And so, you know, just in policy reminders, put putting in some procedures, don't, don't use school.
None of these, once these policies are set, how do they get passed on to staff? Like if there's a big like, that's that's probably the important one that they are.
Typically through employee handbooks or staff handbooks, then we take that and we, I mean, not maybe work, but we then we create it. And trickle it down into staff or employee handbooks.
Gotcha.
Yes.
And you never like highlight a.
And now I have been trying, I've been working on kind of a, you know, standard operating procedures the last few years. Um, slide deck that we tried, I tried to push out to staff to kind of, and it highlights the big things.
Yeah, because those, I mean, like these sort of things, these these sort of email things.
That are everyday things.
For that, those are kind of things that are good reminders.
Mm hmm. And now we have Sean, as he's been elevated to a different basic position. He understands that he'll be responsible to help enforce that and wants can work with. Whoever. So really, he's the one that went through all this. He spent a lot of time on it, so questions definitely direct to Josh to work with Sean to get to the answers. That's why it looks a little bit different than how I edited things because we just, that's his thing. So we gave it to him to, yeah. Yeah. So motion on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got a lot to say. Uh, motion to approve first reading of board policy four hundred series, motion by Coons.
Second.
Second by Rokols. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. None, motion carries.
Now we need to close.
Yeah, we need to close the.
Okay, so quick, the question, we need to talk about contracts before we close the budget.
I'm gonna do that at eleven, put that at the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got like seven more.
If we didn't go before. Just use the contracts affect the budget or no? Yeah.
It's a separate number.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't approving something for that.
So I'm, yeah, I'm gonna make note at seven oh six, we're gonna close the public hearing. With a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Do you need to go call for that?
No.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none. Public hearing is closed. Moving on to, yeah, motion to approve the budget for this week or twenty twenty four. Motion by Coons.
Second.
Second by Wolf. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to number seven, uh, we're to set the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget amendment for. Thursday, May eighteenth, that'll be the next, uh, school board meeting, twenty twenty three at five thirty PM central office boardroom.
Take the motion to set the public hearing for the twenty. Five twenty twenty three. Budget amendment for Thursday, May eighteenth. Twenty twenty three at five thirty in the central office boardroom.
Motion by Rokols. Second, second by Coons. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, none, motion carries. Moving on to VSP.
The changes that we need to be aware of.
No.
Motion to approve VSP handbook for summer twenty twenty three and school year twenty three and twenty four.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Same by Rokols. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number nine.
This is the archery to store all the equipment travel with it. Uh. They purchased, they they needed a trailer. They had the funds for a trailer. The cleanest way to do it is. We used our pebble. We bought the trader. This is. And then they they gave, they put fifty five hundred into our activity fund. So now we just need to transfer that activity fund back to Pebble.
Basically, that cost the district.
Zero. It's just the cleanest way that we're doing money. Yes, yes.
Uh. Movement, uh, move to, uh, permanently transfer fifty five hundred dollars from. The Solon School District Activity Fund for archery to the Pebble Fund for the purchase of the two thousand sixteen Doolittle and close.
All right, it's motion by Coons.
Second.
Second by Wolf, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. None, motion carries. Number ten, uh, we talked about this a little bit before, proof payment of, uh, we got two of them. Two teen vans, uh, twelve passenger vans that'll add to our current two that we got, so we'll have four.
Yeah, and and it's really it. And we've budgeted, um, for two more in the next fiscal year, really is becoming as we. Have a shortage of drivers, for instance, our girls' basketball team, they only use vans last winter, the entire winter, and so our golf team is all.
Yeah.
If if it's a, if it's an after school event where it's, um. You don't need anything. We can use these vans. On daily bus routes if we want, which some districts are moving to, as long as the driver has a chauffeur's class D.
Yeah.
So, which is much easier. Chris, Chris is a licensed driver now as a sub.
They'll pick it up in the morning.
We assigned her to Woodlily.
Yep.
Might have to charge a little extra for that one. All right.
Uh, move to approve and pay for two twenty eighteen Ford Transit twelve passenger vans. voucher, aye, Monday, from Waukesha, Wisconsin with licenses and fees.
Perfect, motion by Coons.
Second.
Second by Wolf, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, none, motion carries. Moving on to contracts.
Okay, so the only the thing that I kind of wanted to discuss was. The, let me find it here. So in the. The administrative assistant board secretary position. Um, I don't know if it's always been in the secretary category, but I feel like. That position is very different from a building secretary and I don't. I don't feel that it should be in that same category, just like we have. The, um, the mechanic has his own category. I think that that might be something where that position kind of, it doesn't really. Fit in with any groupings anywhere. So I think, I think it's a very different position and I don't. I don't believe it should be on the same schedule. As all the building secretaries. So I'm not saying that it should be any, any different percentage or anything like that. I'm just saying I think that belongs in its own. Category, kind of how the mechanic is, we didn't. The mechanic in with the bus drivers or or maintenance or anything like that, so I think. That position kind of deserves its own. Categories.
And the benefit of moving it.
Is to take it out of the group if you want to treat it differently.
Yeah, and just because it doesn't. Belong, I mean, I don't think it's the same, but I don't think it could be, their responsibilities are very different, um. From the rest. So and then it. Kind of. Removes that from, and I'm not saying it should be on any different percentage, but it removes it from that.
Just being loved them. It just gives you more flexibility.
Right.
So is that something? We haven't decided right now. Where can we talk about that lane and all the other things that go along with it?
For that specific position?
Yes.
You could pull that specific position out, determine where it best fits. And and at a later date. Um, you could approve that, you could do one of two things, hold the whole, the whole entire. Uh, classified contract thing there. So you can further discuss, or you you could pull that one out specifically, approve everything else on that. Later decide, no, it does fit back in there, place it back in in its appropriate position, or. Pull it out and put it in its own position. You you can. Or you could just decide tonight, just pull it out and place it in its own position. You can do the one of three things.
Well, I I would, I would like to do this. I would like to pull out. I would like us to have a chance to talk about it. I'd like the admin to kind of think where they would want to put it. Have Pat Ryan where she kind of thinks, present it to us next time where you would see it, Michael, we might say. We think it should go back in the under that. We'll have time to talk about it and then kind of address it, but I I don't want to hold up the rest of the contracts.
Yeah, I don't want to do that either, but I don't, I don't want to pay that thing for that, but I just feel like, and I know. Chris is planning at some point to retire and when that happens, we need to, I think that needs to be a position that is attractive so that we can. Pull in some, somebody that's going to be able to handle all the responsibilities she has that are different than.
But sure.
And exactly.
Yeah.
Like don't hurt, that are different than.
Yeah.
No, I agree. And that's why I think if we can maybe talk and figure it out and get some feedback to do it right. You know, instead of rushing it and just trying to say, hey, here it is.
Yeah.
So if we need to prove and then come back and kind of finalize things.
Jamie, I think the good opportunity we have, if we do decide to offer help. She would be on a scatterback potential by herself, sort of not being. Um, where it's said, and they're about not as likely that they're an individual who would be specific to her, so that would be advantageous.
Yeah, so it gives us flexibility with the position.
Absolutely.
So I move to approve the contracts. As presented. Except for the board secretary position, which I would like to pull out and discuss at our next board meeting with. Uh, I mean, with recommendations from admin. Just like where you, in that, I mean, we made, it's just part of the conversation. I mean, I'm, you guys might have a better idea, like in.
Yep.
If you also just kind of you guys go through that and see what you think and then we can discuss it at our next board meeting.
Yeah.
Reasonable.
Yeah, motion by Coons. Second by Rokols. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, none. Motion carries.
Or ten second.
All right, moving on to, uh, information items, uh, debt services, we'll have Tim Oswald.
There.
Yes.
So, um, it last, um, last discussion, we. Uh. We had. Um. There was some question about how much should we borrow and when, uh, for this first issue. Um, and, uh, we spent some time looking at that, um, Davis and. Pat and I had a discussion with the architects, uh, last week. Talked about start date, end date of each projects and that was really. Productive, uh. Discussion for us. Um, and, um. I think what we've come up with is that. You should borrow or can borrow a little bit of money this year. Um, our, our. Our estimate is that three and a half million would get you through all of the design work. Um. And into next spring, when you would start actually bidding out the intermediate building and. I I'm sorry, not bidding out, but having construction start on the intermediate building. And of course, the, uh, transportation and the stadium next summer. Um, so what we, and and I I have to be clear, I mean, we took the architect's estimate and, uh, for cost. And then their estimate for timelines and largely just made up kind of a draw schedule. Based on our, you know, history and working in these kinds of projects where. We make, we made assumptions about how much would be spent each month during the design development and how much would be spent during construction. I I, uh, as you work your way through your CMF risk and and or whether you choose it or not, uh, what'll happen is as we get more information from. The, uh. Architects and or CMs or contractors, you know, will refine the cash flows for them, but. Um, so. The, the thought process that we have is that all of the projects can get. Done. Funded and be completed by the startup school twenty twenty six. If the design team and CMT could go that fast and if that's advisable. Davis and Pat, we talked about maybe having the indoor facility drag out to twenty seven. Um, it looks like right now, um. We should be able to get it funded faster than that. Um. So and I just, I love to an assumption that the board would like to, those projects done as fast as they can be done. So. What we did is put together kind of two simple scenarios, uh, one assuming you borrow. Uh, some money now with now it, by the way, it would be at, you know, closing in July. Uh, and then get, and then issue bonds in more earnest amounts in the summer of twenty four and the summer of twenty five. With, uh, uh, remaining. Balance as necessary, perhaps being in summer of twenty twenty six. And I think when we last talked, I mentioned something about we might need a construction loan or, um. Something like that to kind of cash flow, bridge finance, construction versus bond income. It looks like we will not need that based on the. Draw schedules that we have so far. Looks like the. On proceeds should be sufficient to. Uh. Cover the project costs when they come in without needing any sort of, uh. Temporary construction loan. Now, since I can't see you, I'm kind of, maybe I should pause and. See if you have any comments or questions.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
It sounds to me.
All right, thanks. So we, the second scenario we looked at, we just pushed the, uh, closing date out. From this July to December. Um, and I was, in my head, I was thinking, well, that's four or five months less interest expense. Um, and then what I was forgetting is that it's also four or five months less interest earnings. And, uh. We're actually in a market environment where. Borrowers are able to earn virtually what they're paying on their, on their debts and so. Pushing going from July to December did not really. Pushing, going from July to December did not really have the impact that I had expected that it might. And so, um, my thought would be that we just plot forward on the timeline. Um, that we have and that we shoot for this first borrowing to be, you know, plus, I know, plus or minus three and a half million. Um, I note that the rezo that you approved earlier for the, for the. Uh, engagement with others had a number, I think, not to exceed ten million or something like that, and then the rezo you did. Earlier than that for your budget was twenty five and a half. Those are not in conflict with each other, uh, it's quite customary that the final amount borrowed. Is different than what the uh. What some of those early rezos said, and what we will do when we get to the final borrowing amount is. We'll make sure that the payment schedule for F Y twenty four. For whatever dollar amount is being borrowed, so let's say it's three and a half million. That that payment schedule will coincide with the amount that you levied in taxes. Which was that rezo you did that was for twenty five and a half. So, long-winded way of saying we'll make two go together and you don't have to redo your process you just did. So those are my, what you're scrolling through are my made up monthly draw assumptions, and as we work. Closer with Nathan and, and their team. Um, we'll, we'll obviously refine those draw schedules to uh. Maybe more accurately coincide with how, how money is actually going to mount the door. Doing okay?
Yeah.
So, and this is my preview math, that scheduling looking at is just the proposed bond schedules and. Solving for the uh four or five tax rate. Uh, which fell off that page, it's the far, it's the total P and I on the far right, but that is four or five. So roughly three and a half million this year. Just to hear under ten million next year and the year after that. And when you, with the, with that last piece coming in summer of twenty six. Obviously, all of this is subject to property valuations. Uh, which. Which rollback will be pulling down what you probably got that was pushing up on, if you've got your tax assessment like mine the other day. So. But uh, you know, there is the embedded assumption that your district will continue to grow in fashion similar to how it has grown. In the recent past, so. Um, we're starting in a market environment that interest rates are in the mid to high threes. So that's not terrible, but it's certainly not, you know, where we were two years ago. And for right now, those cost estimates you see on the screen are just Tim's placeholders, they're reasonable but not firm. We haven't gone out and gotten fee estimates from anybody at this point.
And I assume a couple of years from now, should. Interest rates go down, you know, in billing, we're renegotiating, interest rates.
Yeah, so great que- great question, I'm sorry to interrupt, um. So we'll reserve the right to, for the district to prepay the bond, it's customary that that. There'd be a no prepayment period for something like eight years. So you would, you'd probably be stuck with the payments you have until, let's say, twenty thirty one or twenty thirty two. Um, we haven't really talked about this, but to remind the board. You do have bonds from the prior projects and they actually start to become prepayable here next year. Uh, so we'll also be looking at those bonds to see if there's any money to be saved by restructuring or financing those. Does that answer your question?
I think so, I think the answer is yes.
Thanks. So one last item for um, not for tonight, but for the next agenda, Pat and I have talked briefly about a. What we call reimbursement resolution, where uh you're gonna start spending money. Perhaps before you receive bond proceeds and the IRS prescribes a. Process that you would follow to uh. To ensure that you can use tax exempt bond monies to pay for things you've actually already paid for. Uh, mostly at this point, I think, design work. Um, so we'll get that process going with your attorney for probably the next uh board meeting.
If the questions. Didn't you just said that was an email?
Yep, I just emailed you that presentation. So you've, you've got that presentation that Tim just gave that, those papers, and then I also sent you the um. Timeline that we came up with, um, that Jamie was talking about with Tim and I S G as far as. Timing those projects with available funds. From. Fall of twenty twenty six.
Cause I assume that we're trying to replace the turk this next summer.
Right, yes.
But.
Yes.
On this summer, that we have to walk, we gotta find a contractor and lock that in.
Yes. Yeah. Then this summer, we'll go to, we'll probably go to work and start looking and at. Different companies and designs and all that stuff and get them locked in to install.
Three and a half million will be for the, or whatever earnest money could have to do to secure that.
And some of the fees that we're paying, yeah, yep.
Yeah, correct. One thing that we kind of were talking about too, you know, when you start a project, some of the stuff, some stuff's not available for, what, sixty weeks? Yeah, like a switchboard, I mean, think about that. So some of the stuff we'll need to make sure we get on, it was kind of their recommendation yesterday of. There's a shortage out there, you know, there's all this construction, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot to think about, but.
Yeah, I think that's the part if we decide to go with a manager at risk. That's something we can't delay too long, because they're the people that are looking down the road and getting stuff here all the time.
Yes.
Well, and they know too, like, when you wanna open a building or, you know, we talked about Lakeview, you know, it's. When can you do a reconstruction, well, that's when the kids aren't at school.
Right.
So they're on strict timelines and can control stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get some more meetings next week, but we'll keep you all.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
No.
No, I think that's good for Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, have a great night.
Thanks for waiting in row.
No problem.
All right, uh, talking points. Start with James.
Um, I'm. Lots of good stuff tonight, um, but the, the teach to heal. Um, like, you're making me get spoiled, but some really, it's like me, it sounds like the teachers are really on board and that it's something nice. Glad that we're bringing in and give some project that we're gonna start working on, that's, that sounds exciting to me. And the teachers are excited about it. That's, um. Excited to hear how that goes.
Definitely. Justin?
Uh. She's got my heart here and just calling thanks for what you do, you brought me like into that, like you. I mean, you know, your willingness to say, yeah, put your sign up here.
Um, I think the beginning, you're seeing Amber pick on this leadership. Uh, possibility for her, um, and just an opportunity for her to really grow in this position. And grow herself. Um, and really become a leader, you all know she can come. And uh, that's, you know, we've been doing, you know, this for a while and. And um, it's funny, Tennessee, they're excited about it and, and uh. Um, I know you and I were on finance when we first started. Had a little bit of that and just watching that all kind of come together to go to the financials, so.
I'll give a little attention to math department, so I thought that was pretty unique, I mean, I was a math guy, it was one of my favorite classes and took all the. Big town classes and stats and, so uh, no, I think it's interesting, and I think it's gonna be fun to see how that evolves and. It's good to see some leadership and, you know, our staff kind of tackling that and, you know, there's no true script, it's. You guys are collaborating and trying to make this work, so, and then it'll be interesting to see how the data kind of aligns, so. Yeah. Uh, it looks like it's it, somebody wants to make the motion to adjourn, uh. Well, also our next meeting will be uh Thursday, May eighteenth, at uh central office here at five thirty.
And that will start as a public hearing, then five thirty five will be the regular meeting.
Correct, perfect.
Uh. And I am gonna send you guys an email, uh, May first, we have to have a special meeting that night. For some week.
All right, motion by Kuz.
Second.
Second by Rokols. All in favor, aye, opposed, none.
Seven thirty one, thank you.